Good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the CUSD 303 School Board on Monday, April 18th, 2022. The time is 5:29. Ms. Larson, the role please.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Fairgreed?
Here.
Mr. Kuscher?
Here.
Mr. Lackner?
Here.
Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
And Mrs. Parker?
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, it does not appear that we have citizen comments this evening. And so that brings us quickly right to our for action item. But before we do go to a motion, I would like to, on behalf of the school board, thank everyone who participated in the process to choose a new superintendent. We appreciate more than 850 people who completed the superintendent search survey and the staff, students, parents, and community members provided feedback during the 33 focus groups. These steps were an integral part of us being able to identify the most important characteristics of our desired new leader. After interviewing five candidates in the first round and continuing conversations with two finalists, our board is pleased to announce that we will be taking action this evening to approve Dr. Paul Gordon as the next District 303 Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent of schools employment contract?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, it looks like there's no discussion. Ms. Larson, the role please.
Mrs. Fairgreed?
Yes.
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes. Seven zero. District 303 School Board is thrilled to announce that Dr. Gordon has agreed to serve in our community. We are confident that his leadership skills, track record, track record of improving academic achievement, and his skillful engagement with stakeholders will be an asset to our students, staff, and community. More information about Dr. Gordon will be included in a video message to the community, and it'll be on the website this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn the special board meeting on April 18th, 2022? So move.
Second.
Ms. Larson, the role.
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreed?
Yes.
And Mrs. Parker?
Yes. Board adjourns at 5:32 PM. Okay, give us just a few minutes and we'll get started with our LNT committee. We just need to switch around.
And we? Everybody good here? Okay. All right, it is 5:38 PM. I'd like to call to order Monday, April 18th, 2022, Learning and Teaching Committee meeting for District 303. So, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? She's on her way. Okay, while she's bringing that up, I'll read the introduction here. The school code provides for a public comment period at each board meeting, subject to reasonable constraints. The practice of this board is to limit public comment to three minutes per speaker to a total of 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers addressing the board are expected to maintain a reasonable level of civility. Also, personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. Comments regarding individuals should be respectful. Insults and defamatory remarks have no place in this setting. The board will terminate public comment if speakers cannot adhere to these guidelines. Please identify yourself at the beginning of your remarks. And first up, we have Natalie Stratton, and the topic is equity.
Hi, I'm Natalie Stratton. I have two sophomores at St. Charles North. It's great to speak without a mask. We've had a little bit of a change of four of the boards, so I just wanted to give some friendly reminders of different viewpoints from the citizens. Last summer, we had over 1,200 real paper-to-pen signatures asking to pause or end deep equity, our interpretation of critical race theory. The board decided to pause it, thank you. And then we're supposed to have the audit, which I know I fell off of the bandwagon a little bit, so I'm a little lost on where we stand with that. But between the money spent on the audit, the money spent on deep equity, a lot of that money could have been used maybe for case-to-case, helping individuals that are falling behind, whether it's because of minority issues or other issues. And I wish that would have been considered before we jumped into a critical race or an equity program without really getting a better evaluation. Many states, over a dozen states, have either stopped critical race theory teachings, K through 12, or they have it on their agenda. And even the progressive Colorado District 11 has actually ended their equity program. So what I'm asking today is that you consider ending this, what we, what many people think are racially slanted equity program, and maybe use funds towards one-on-one cases, whether it's better teachers, different teachers, one-on-one counseling programs for some of the minorities that are falling behind, or even non-minorities. I thank you for your time.
And next up is Max Gordon. Does this indicate end of meeting? All right. Okay. Topic is same old topic.
Same old topic. Okay, I just want to be clear on what my topic was. Good evening, board, and we just announced a contract, so appreciate your hard work on that. I've been radio silent. I'm sorry. Radio, radio silent for about six weeks. And really try to clear the, clear the air, or clear the way for you all to not be meddled with, with thought. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate your hard work. I mean that sincerely. I can't appreciate what it takes. Seven words, eight numbers. St. Charles, best public school in Illinois, 2026, 2027. That's the same old topic for me. The academic achievements, you all have been furnished by a former board president that shows that we're six out of eight in comparison with our comparables academically. I appreciate the merit scholars that have come recently. We had four. Appreciate the athlete that, the wrestler that achieved state championship. I coached wrestling at one time, so I know personally what it takes to achieve. I would just ask you as a board, because I'm at the point of believing that we, as a board, need to hold accountable the results of our school academically. I don't see that happening. I see, I went to both LNT, I went to one LNT meeting and saw the other. And I think it still remains from five months ago, or four months ago, there was a question at the board table that asked the question, how many competencies does it take to graduate in a competency-based system? And I don't believe that answer was ever provided. So that was kind of an odd, to me, an odd approach. If I'm trying to advance a competency-based system, I at least should know how many competencies it takes. So I want to regain competence in the academic push here. I'm still looking for an academic champion, and I would like that to be one of you on our board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that concludes the citizens' comments. Next up is the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pearson.
Yes, thank you. There's just a couple of items that I want to share with the board and remind the public of this evening. First of all, beginning on April the 25th, which I believe is next Monday, yes, we are opening online a returning student registration. So if you go to the district website and you scroll just below the banner, you'll see the tiles and online registration tile is there with directions of how to access Home Access Center and complete your online registration. This is our third year to have, to do all of our returning student registration online, so we'll be pushing out communication to families to remind them of the process and encourage them to go ahead and complete the online registration. As has been in the past, the actual billing for the fees will actually not be posted until the 1st of July. And there will be an early bird period for people who want to pay their fees by, I think it's July the 29th, will be able to receive a discounted fee price. So we want to encourage everyone to go ahead and get online and get that completed. We certainly depend on this information for planning and ensuring that we have space for everyone in our building, so getting that completed as soon as possible once it opens next Monday would be helpful. The second thing I wanted to just mention was that we actually have four teachers in our district that have been nominated for Kane County Educator of the Year awards. That will be next Friday, April the 29th, at the Q Center. Those educators are Max Paylightner from St. Charles East, Jacob Burlingame from St. Charles North, Tom Poulain from St. Charles North. He's the Dean's Assistant Ambassador and softball coach. Danielle Shepherd, St. Charles North art teacher. Max Paylightner is a specialized wellness teacher, and Jacob is an English teacher. So I just wanted to mention that, that we again have four educators that have been nominated, and of course, will update you on the results after the awards are handed out next Friday. And then I just wanted to mention, because I know it's a big deal for families, a prom, real prom is happening on Saturday, April the 30th, both for East and North. East will be in Oak Brook, and North will be at the Q Center. So that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Okay, then next up, we have our four discussions, discussion items. First up is the transition update, transitions update. Here we are.
Yes. Aubrey up to the microphone to kind of introduce her staff and students to give us an update on our transition program and how our work program has been working.
Well, thank you guys for having us back again. I have some very excited young men who want to share with you a little bit about their experience participating in our transition program here at, on the other side of the Haynes Building. So I'm going to give them an opportunity to do that, but before we get started, I just wanted to introduce my staff that are here today and support these guys every single day as they go through their programming. So first, we have Ashley Wasserman, who's one of our classroom teachers, and then Jackie Nillis, who's our work-based learning specialist. You'll hear from her in a little bit. And Annie Dragish, who is our transition coordinator. And we have other staff that just unfortunately weren't able to make it here this evening. So without further ado, gentlemen, come on up. Come on up. Okay, so this is MJ Cirillo. All right, and and Mitchell Han, please step forward just a little bit. All right, so Jackie's going to share just a little bit about our work-based learning program for you, just to kind of give you a general sense of the types of experiences that our students have the opportunity to work in, and then Annie's going to help kind of go through just some panel questions so that they can share with you information about their experiences.
So our work-based learning program is really guided by the essential employability competency statements, and that was kind of pushed out by the Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act. So we're really trying to use some of their top 10 curricular areas to really push these guys as towards independence as possible. So we're working on things like teamwork and conflict resolution, communication, problem-solving, decision-making, all those things that really make somebody employable in the long run. And we've done that through things in the building, some of our micro businesses, and they'll talk about this a little bit, but we have things like Creative Threads, which is our t-shirt company. We also have been doing things with the Daily Bean, which is outside, but is completely, both of those are student-run. But we've also partnered with some really awesome employers and some different organizations throughout the year, including Hilton Garden Inn and St. Charles Park District, Anderson, Maine, and like I said, St. Charles Public Library. So with the support of those employers, we've really been able to help our students with the support of our job coaches become as independent as possible. So we would love to have these guys tell you more about it, and we're going to have MJ, who is a second-year transition student, and Mitchell, who's our first-year transition student, answer some questions. All right.
All right, so MJ, you first. Can you tell us how your work-based learning experiences have sort of helped you reach your goals?
My work-based learning experiences have reached my goals because I've become a reliable worker. I know when my job is done on time, and I can also see when I need to get the work done in the efficient amount of time there. I'm looking at my job on Thursday when I'm on the job chain. Thank you.
When you think about what you want to do in the future, what do you see yourself doing for work?
I see myself working, I'm going to try working in a grocery store, because I never worked one before. My second job is probably doing either like immunology, because I'm kind of also interested into that, so.
Awesome. Mitchell, I would love to know what you want to do for a job when you're an adult. All right, so when you think about the future, what job do you want to do?
I would like to work as a sales clerk or at a restaurant. I currently work at Wahlburgers. I really like wiping tables and the people I work with.
That's awesome. So Mitchell has recently started paid employment at Wahlburgers, and he's doing an incredible job. And how about this? What's your favorite job site when you think of all the places you've worked this year?
I like working at Anderson Animal Shelter.
Nice. He's great, and it's a tough job working at Anderson, isn't it? All right, don't go anywhere quite yet. How about you? When you think about the future, what do you see yourself doing? Nope, I've asked you that. How about your favorite job site?
Oh, my favorite job site is probably either the Daily Bean, which I work over the summer, and working at Anderson Animal Shelter, because they get to clean dishes for the pups and clean crates of new puppies coming in.
You also have a paid job that'll start pretty soon.
I work at the Kane County Cougars over the summer, which is my seasonal point.
And what you're wearing today?
Today, on my shirt, I wear my crate first logo, which I designed myself. This is a t-shirt run business that's inside to make me pay for making business. I mean, usually do with my class on Mondays. The t-shirt I'm currently wearing, it's mine. I pressed the logo. I tie-dyed it. I created it myself. We do have t-shirts that are currently on sale at the Daily Bean Library in St. Charles Public Library, which is open from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM each day, Monday through Friday. They are currently 15 bucks, and they have our Daily Bean mug ones.
I did not ask you to do that. A natural salesman, so anybody from the community is here. Yeah, natural, natural salesman. So yeah, we did a contest for creating our logo, and MJ was designing, so that's, that's the logo for our business. Driving. Awesome. Yeah, is there anything that I missed here?
I have something to add. I recently, because I, my schedule is unfortunately the same as your guys' schedule. I typically can't go to the Daily Bean, but a couple of weeks ago, I was fortunately able to go to the Daily Bean, and my favorite, my new favorite barista, Mitchell, was the one who served me my coffee, and he did an awesome job.
That's really not to shy. Well, thank you. I really, really appreciate the opportunity. More support to our program. I look forward to the opportunity. So we got a great team of professionals that work to support. Just thankful to have you all come in, but just really appreciate it. So did want to acknowledge and recognize partnership. So so what we'd like to do is just present for St. Charles Public Library for their generous partnership, its support of the Daily Bean, and really helping us make that dream a reality. So I think, you know, the community partnerships that we have here at St. Charles are so strong, and they run so deep. And so just thank you, you know, for that, and please pass it along to me, but I wanted to go ahead and present that to you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is item 2B, the professional learning contract.
Absolutely. So we would like to talk a little bit about a professional learning contract that we'd like to engage in with our Learning Forward, which is kind of the kind of gold standard as it relates to professional learning for educators. We could maybe flip the slide. The contract that we're going to speak to this evening that we're bringing aboard is aligned to policy 510 on making sure we have strong, high-quality staff, as well as to our strategic commitments and our long-term goal for all of our students. Our outcomes for this evening are to explain that comprehensive learning plan to support classroom teachers in accelerating learning for every student, as well as to include the Learning Forward contract for approval at the May 9th Board of Education meeting. In January, when we reviewed our ESSR plan, we discussed that we would be addressing unfinished learning from the pandemic by focusing on acceleration versus remediation and intervention, and that we would be doing that by leveraging the work within our PLC programs. This slide highlights the differences between acceleration and remediation. As you can see, acceleration requires teachers to change their mindsets, as well as the way they design instruction for students. In order to do this well, we will need to provide the professional learning for our teachers with ongoing supports to help them transfer this learning into the classroom. In order to provide that support to our PLCs and doing this work, we'll need to utilize all of our specialists and coaches so that they can provide that job-embedded support to prioritize standards and determine where students are in a learning progression. As this is a new way of thinking, it will be important for us that we're constantly working with our teachers to understand how to take that and apply it to the students that we are serving today. When we developed our ESSR plan, we increased our mass specialists at the elementary and added a mass specialist at each middle school in anticipation of moving forward with this idea of acceleration for all. In addition, we added a specialist, some specialist positions for special education and dual language. The reason we are leveraging our coaches and specialists is based upon the research within effective professional learning. While all of these components are really important when we're providing learning to our teachers, that bottom one, as you take a look at coaching and following up, is the most important and has the greatest impact on moving practice into transferring practice from new skills into the classroom. And we really felt that these positions will put us in a spot to be able to really support teachers as they transfer new learning forward. Our current instructional support coaches have very clear roles and responsibilities. They're kind of outlined here on this slide that are tied directly to job-embedded learning, professional learning, as well as professional learning to support our school improvement plan. professional learning, as well as professional learning to support our school improvement plans at each of our building levels. Our reading and math specialists really have their jobs divided into like three, into thirds, with the first third focusing in on coaching and those areas up there around learning facilitator, classroom supporter, instructional specialist, really kind of nearing what our instructional support coaches do. A third of their time focused in on data and supporting people with understanding their data and making instructional decisions, as well as a third of their time providing interventions to our students that are tier-three students, so doing some real direct support with students over time. We began our our ISC program in 2008. When we started that program, we invited Learning Forward out to do their Learning Forwards Coaching Academy. Moving forward, our district really then duplicated those services or that model for anybody else that we hired along. We had Learning Forward back in 2010 and again in 2011, but they didn't really provide the entire comprehensive learning academy. They really came in and focused and fine-tuned some of the learning and the coaching that we had received in 2008. So if we look at our current instructional coaches, we have one that had participated in this academy back when we started. And so we're really looking forward to taking this opportunity to provide this learning to all of our instructional support coaches moving forward. As we think about preparing both our coaches and our specialists to support our teachers, we felt it was really important that we provided them with some common training and some common learning that really focused in on language, structures, and strategies that were the same. We recognize that we're going to have numerous people in a building that are responsible for coaching, and that in order to do that well, we have to have really clear roles and responsibilities, but we also have to have all of our specialists talking and speaking the same language. And that this is an opportunity for us to get really cohesive and make sure that language is the same so that we're supporting kind of along the way. The academies, there will be two separate academies, which is new for us this, this time through. One will be content-specific, and those content areas will be ELA and math. So they will provide specific coaching-related strategies to those specialists in ELA and math that focus in on accelerated learning for all, so that we're giving very clear, specific instruction and strategies that again is consistent across the board. It also provides for general coaching academy, which is for more of our instructional support coaches that aren't specialists in a content area. And how do I provide that professional learning overall? And how do I embed that also? So that's kind of both pieces. You can see they're pretty intensive environments where there are five days of onsite coaching, six days for that general coaching, so that they're going to get that opportunity to hear the theory, practice, get feedback on that practice, and also gives us an opportunity to bring all those people together in one room, give them some similar training, break apart, as well as bring those groups back together to create building-level cohesive teams. So again, that we're thinking consistently and creatively kind of along the way. The cost for this is $87,340. But as you see, we've been able to identify funding through our federal funds in order to support this coaching academy for this summer. We would not need to use any of our LEA funds in order to support that. So given that we are hiring some of these positions through our ESSR funding, we've leveraged some additional funds within ESSR. We are also utilizing some of our IDEA funds, which is our special education funds, as it relates to our students for those specialist positions for special ed, and then Title II, which is teacher improvement funds to cover the rest of that cost. As we think about kind of success indicators, how do we know if this program is successful and will be successful? We're really looking to have each building create a system or a plan to measure how that, how this coaching is then transferring into practice into the classroom. And the reason that needs to be done, building by building, as opposed to here's what this looks like, is that what's going to happen in each classroom in each building is going to depend on the needs of that building and those particular students that they are supporting kind of along the way, along the way. So we want to make sure that we're honoring that. But also, when we build this into our coaching academy, we will be providing that this is what you're going to need to be thinking about. How are you measuring that transfer, and what does that look like over time? So we are making a recommendation that we approve the contract for Learning Forward so that we can provide this professional learning over the summer. Would be five days in July that we are looking at providing that. This opportunity for our instructional support specialists or special ed specialists are dual-language. Bilingual, thank you. As well as it also offers up some opportunities for us to bring some others in, like our behavior coaches, again, so that we can start to get really consistent in our language and our structures and our strategies. Myself and Pam Jensen, who's our Director of Instruction, are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
I have one quick question. So with that Learning Forward agreement, do they also aid with that process for measurement within the schools? You said there would be an individual plan based on the needs of the schools. Are they part of that process? Do they have some framework for you to use?
So what is really wonderful about this contract? Is it allows us to, to individualize it based upon our needs. So that will be part of the conversation we have with them, is that one of the things we need to do is measure how that's transferring into practice. Now, I can't say to you that I know specifically that they have something. However, I also know that their entire framework is around the idea that first you measure what goes into the classroom, and then you measure student achievement, right? Like first one, one, then the other. So I am anticipating that they will have different ways for us to be able to do that.
So, okay, so the, the focus would be the specialists for ELA and math, instructional support coaches, bilingual, and then special ed, right? That's the scope?
Yeah.
So how does that span across our system? In terms of what's the breakdown between elementary, middle school, high school?
And early childhood? Yes, that is a great question. So the majority of our instructional coaches, reading specialists and math specialists are at the elementary level. So it'll be heavier, and I don't have the exact numbers, and I can definitely look that up and provide it for you. Then at the middle school, which has three instructional coaches, two reading specialists, and then next year would have two math specialists for the first time. And then at the high school, each high school has three ISCs. And I believe we were planning to separate. Were we sending some of them to the content area? No, okay, I must speak.
There's three ISCs at each of the high schools. And we were also looking at some of the TOSA positions, the positions that support ELA and math, and offering them to come to the coaching academy as well, so that they can learn the information.
Okay, and then organizationally, these folks roll up into, into your area? Ms. Jensen or toward the?
So the instructional support coaches roll into my area. And then math specialists and reading specialists are under different people within our learning and teaching framework. And so we collaborate and coordinate together. And we're really excited about this opportunity because we're going to be able to have the same coaching language, no matter which specialist we're talking about. And so we'll be able to learn from each other and coordinate better together. And so that's why we're excited.
Okay. More questions? So we've had the Coaches Academy since 2008. Did we look at other organizations at this point to kind of do a validation that this is still the right partner? And how did that look?
So we first looked at Learning Forward, just because that was what we were familiar with. And what was exciting about Learning Forward was that they offer this other coaching academy, which is content-specific. And we haven't found that in the other areas. So there are other coaching academies that are out there, but they are very specific. I hesitate to say formulaic, but they're very specific in what they want coaches to do. Learning Forward is more ground level. This is what we need to do, and then we can customize and support what we want as well in the coaches. Learning Forward is also the organization, the national organization for professional learning. So they're the one that creates the standards for professional learning. And instructional coaches kind of sit under that professional learning realm. And since they're the national organization, they're kind of like the gold standard.
Thank you.
I'm curious about, first of all, I want to be sure that we have early childhood included in. And I'm curious about the need for, are we meeting the needs of what our teachers have? Are three ISCs at the high school enough? I think they have a different, at least it used to be, they had a different role in elementary. They were required to teach. I don't know if that model is something you want to include in elementary. It's a little more difficult in elementary because teachers in elementary teach all subjects. But it would be, it would be interesting to kind of review and reflect on what might need to be changed and what we might want to add or change in the process. I'm glad to hear that the middle school is getting more support. So if there's a, as you're going through this process, to me, this is absolutely necessary. And I'm proud that D303 has been way ahead of other districts in having ISCs available since 2008. But I want to be sure that we aren't missing opportunities here to adjust or add or do whatever is necessary to really increase our instructional change in practice. So whatever you can do and keep us informed next year would be great.
Absolutely. I think this is a great opportunity as we recalibrate, right? And we're going to re-ground ourselves in what does this look like? What's best practice? What are these systems and structures? That will give us an opportunity as we go to implement. Do we have enough? Do we not? Do we need to bring things back? I think our data about what's transferring into the classroom will also play out there too, right? Like, are we doing it enough? And what does, if it's not enough, what is our data showing that we need to be doing more of? And does that require us to think differently as well? So this is a great opportunity for us to do some of that learning and some of that rethinking.
You talked about five days of onsite professional learning in July. The description of the academy talks about 35 people and five days for content specifics and six days for general. Is it 11 days onsite or is it five days?
It is five days onsite with two instructors for content and one. Do I have that right?
So it is five days for the content, and there's two instructors for each of those. So it's five days onsite. And then they're going to have a follow-up virtual for a half a day. The General Coaching Academy is four days onsite in the summer. And then they come back for two days in October to do a follow-up and some additional training. So it's six onsite days.
And in terms of the people, is the 35 people that are referenced parenthetically, is that the sum total of all of the slots that are available across all these different types of coaches?
There are 70 total slots across the two academies.
So is it 35 for content-specific and 35 for general?
That is correct.
Would we expect that the same people participate in each?
No, they'd be different people. So there'll be 70 different people who are trained.
Any other? Yeah, just one quick, just if you can clarify for, for everyone, what, what the concept of acceleration versus remediation, so that people can understand? Because I know there's some concern about, hey, what if my kid needs remediation? What's, what's going to happen there?
Yeah, so the research has been really clear that what we need to be thinking about is thinking about what is the current grade level standard? And if we have a student who's not quite ready, able to answer, to access that grade level standard, where are they in the learning progression? And what's, what's different about acceleration is I'm going to focus on the skills that are specifically related to that grade level standard so that the student eventually accesses that grade level standard. Remediation or intervention says, I'm just going to come step back, and I'm going to focus on just trying to catch you up, but not focusing that catch, that catching up specifically to a grade level standard that's going to allow you to take that information and utilize it within a day or two, you know, in the classroom at a grade level standard. Was I clear? No, it's an excellent question. No, X, I just wanted to make sure I felt like I was talking.
Am I like? If there are no other questions, we can move to item two. Excuse me, two C. I'm sorry, can I forget? Yes, this would go on for consent. And item two C, Title I, School-Wide Waivers.
All right, good evening. Do I have the ability to advance? That way, and I'm terrible with the clicker, so I'm apologizing upfront. But thank you. So I'm here to talk about the school, Title I School-Wide Waivers for you this evening. This is an annual presentation that we bring forward to the board. So for discussion this evening, we're looking for you to approve the Title I. That was not. Looking for you to approve the Title I School-Wide Waivers for Anderson Elementary, Davis Primary, and for Richmond Intermediate School. So currently, under our policy, we do have policy that as it relates to Title I programming. We are thinking about the strategic commitment in terms of responsible stewardship. So taking those Title I dollars and making sure that we're maximizing and using those the best way to impact students. So when we think about a school-wide status and why we would need a waiver. So thinking about Title I, we get issued amount of funds based on the number of students that are low-income students, and we are to use those funds to improve student achievement specifically. So with the school-wide waiver, it allows us to use those funds that we receive in a school-wide manner, which means we can spend those to help all students in that school. It helps us have all teachers and all parents participate, and we can support instruction for all of the students in that school. So then let's talk about the difference if we don't go school-wide. Do you see that Munn Hall is a targeted assistance school? So they're not eligible to apply for the waiver. In order to be eligible to apply for the waiver, you have to have at least 20%, 20% of your student population on free or reduced lunch. That's the measure. So with target assistance, that means that Munn Hall, they'll receive their Title I funds, but they'll only be able to use those funds to benefit students that they've targeted or identified as in need of intervention. So let's say that there are students who need reading intervention. Only those students and that teacher that's directly servicing those students for that intervention would be able to access funding or materials. With school-wide, as in the case of Anderson, Davis, and Richmond, we can purchase books to benefit all of the students. So you'll see that they've bought decodable books. They've built up their classroom libraries. So there's the resources that every kid, every teacher can access. And so when they do parent events, they can have parent events that target or assist every parent, every family in that school, as opposed to just the ones that they've identified as needing some support academically. So what you see on that slide there is you can see the most current status of the students who are on free and reduced lunch at those buildings. So you see that Anderson, the 25%, Davis at 25.81%, Munn Hall at 13, just a little over 13, and then Richmond, just not quite at 29% there. And so with that being said, we have to apply for a waiver for those three schools in order to operate a school-wide. If we do not have a waiver, then we'll have to go back to being targeted assistance. So those schools are currently operating under school-wide. You approved their waiver last year, and we're seeking your approval again this year. So again, the process is that if a school is under the threshold of 40%, so that's the threshold that the federal government sets. So if we were at 40% of those schools, we would not need a waiver. We could choose to operate school-wide. But since we're not, we have to look at the number, and if it's over 20%, we can seek a waiver. And I said, this does not change the amount of money that we receive. It only allows our schools to have greater flexibility to impact more students, more staff, more families. And then this is a process we must step through every year as long as they are below the 40% and at that 20% or higher, the board must approve it. And then we submit this, is be in there, the final approvers of that and allow us to operate school-wide. Each of the schools that are submitting a waiver have indicated how they would like to use those funds and how they are seeking to address high-quality instruction within their buildings and to work closing the achievement camp. And they've specifically addressed the educational needs that have, why, why do we need to go school-wide? Why, why would this benefit our students and our staff and our families?
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? This is something we've done over the years, so that will go on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Next up is item two D, Annual Renewals.
Good evening. In front of you are the previously approved board core and supplemental materials, resources for schools. These are annual renewals. Every year they come back up either disposable or usable materials that come up for renewal or software licenses that come back from renewal. They are consolidated on one sheet for you. The area is highlighted in gold. We were able to come up with three-year contracts. Each one of them represents an additional savings to us by doing so. And they're, these are the annual notes, they're back for you to review.
I think that's it for that is, are there again, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, and I believe that can go on the consent agenda as well. So, right, next item then is item two E, the Equity Audit Update. Dr. Taylor to provide the update. Hello?
Good evening. Okay, so this update is going to pertain to our focus groups and then an update about where we are with starting our student achievement data analysis. So focus groups are underway. As of today, CEC has met with several members of the D303 community, including elementary, middle and high school parents, high school students, classified and certified staff and school and district administrators. And focus groups will continue through April 25th. So they're still ongoing, there's still other groups within those larger groups that are still needing to be met with. For stakeholders who are not selected to participate in a focus group, but desire to share their opinions, we created that link on our website that will take interested staff, parents and middle and high school students to a questionnaire where they can write any responses to the same questions that are being asked in the focus groups. Stakeholders can complete that questionnaire only one time, so we have made sure that that is the only way that people are allowed to take part in that. They can't submit multiple times. The window to submit written responses will close on the same day that our focus groups will end, which is April 25th. And as previously stated, the data collected from the written responses will be reported on separately so that we could distinguish between themes that emerged from the focus groups and then those themes that may have emerged from the written, written in forms. Overall, CEC's final report is designed to find the assets that exist within our district and look for opportunities to better serve all D303 students. And then our last component of this audit is the student achievement data analysis. And so between now and the next learning and teaching committee meeting, the review of student achievement data will get underway. Like I said, this is the third and final component of our equity audit. The review, which will be conducted by Chapin Hall at the University of Chicago, will include an analysis of our academic and social emotional data to gain insight into student achievement across student groups and how the curriculum instruction and learning environment is influencing student outcomes. Data to be reviewed and analyzed includes our I-Ready data, IAR data, SAT panorama and attendance data.
Does anyone have any questions regarding, I saw a little bit of writing going on, so?
Just one, we just recently shifted to panorama as a SEL measurement tool. Will Chapin Hall Center also have access to the Accra data?
Yes, they will have the access to the data from this school year for three through three 12. And that, actually, it's just this school year that we did the SEL component. So yes, they will have the data from this school year.
I think he's asking if they can also have the Accra data from last year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. It has not, I mean, we can reach out. I would want to ask them whether that makes sense and whether that works for the analysis that they're doing.
We should make sure they know that we have that data in case they do want to pull it. Anyone else? Looked like there was some movement there. This is the game.
Sorry, I turned it on, turned it off. To be sure that people know about the link on the website, could we make sure that the buildings have it in their newsletters? And maybe that's already happened, as well as it's students at the high school and middle school are alerted to it, just to be sure. I don't know how community people will hear about it if they're not watching, but just in order to reach as many people as we can.
So we have asked the principals to put it in their newsletters to direct all stakeholders that, beginning on April 4th, that they could go to the site, but we can ask them to send it up and reminder because now there is a direct link available and we can provide that for everybody.
And just real quickly, for those who are paying attention to this meeting, where exactly on the website? On our website is that link so that people can?
So if you go to the main page, there's a tile at the bottom and it says, information about equity audit. And you click there and then you go about three quarters of the way down on the page, there's a parent intake form on the left-hand side. That's where we need to verify your email address so that we know that someone who is filling it out is actually a parent of a D303 student. And then on the right-hand side, we have a link where staff and students, middle school and high can just go ahead and use their D303 email to put in their responses.
Is there a place for community members who may not have children in the school?
There is not.
If, for instance, an alumni wanted to, it wouldn't, I can see why it wouldn't be in a current audit, but they could just send to the board or directly to you any stories or information they wanted to share. But it wouldn't be in the audit because it isn't current.
Well, so as for, as far as the audit is concerned, we have stipulated it's current students, current staff and parents of D303 students. But of course, anyone is welcome to provide their feedback, I'm sure, to the board.
Thanks.
Any good on this side? Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to next month's update. So that brings us to future agenda items. So, Dr. Igo, can you give us some potential items? We always caution that these are potential items because of scheduling.
Absolutely. So next month, we have on our agenda the sixth through eighth grade ELA curriculum. Just to provide you an update of our process, again, it's not a completed process, but we had agreed early on that we would kind of update you along the way. There'll be an equity update for sure and possibly an update related to the diversity equity and inclusion committee in regards to their recommendations regarding definitions and some vision along the way.
Okay, and we had talked about the early releases, that is that going to be next month or?
Yes, we can certainly will provide you with an update.
A potential, again, always a potential.
Thank you for the reminder.
Okay, all right. Well, that being said, nothing more. It is 6:28 and I think-